Uh, let's get started with the pledge of allegiance. I think my students, you know, I have seen some pretty, pretty, pretty vicious things. I mean, shit, I'm gonna do this all with liberty and justice for them. Thank you. Uh, okay, it's May. It's May again. This is the mad dash at the end of the school year. We not limited to PSA's, Keystone, AP tests, finals, concert, award ceremonies, end of the year events. And we also had this one thing at the end of the year, graduations as well, so. There's multiple names every week, so hopefully you're gonna enjoy us. The good thing about it is, uh, they're fun. Fun things where we're celebrating students, so. Uh, that's the really good part of May, but it is, it is a really crazy month. And of course, we're up against the USGA and the USO coming, um, the week directly after we're done, so. Just, uh, working our way through the month, so please, like I said, try to join us. Um, okay, we have three presentations. First in school, I have some additional information that I'm gonna include for you on school start times. As you recall, in the last meeting, we get additional surveys and we surveyed the seventh grade eleven. Surveyed the staff again, and we surveyed the parents again, so I'm gonna share some of that information with you. Okay, you guys at home, share my screen here.
Uh, Dr. English, it's, it, the sound is still really rough. The video's not good, which is okay, but the sound is, is very garbled and, and. Yeah, we can't hear much at all. It sounds like you're underwater. So I don't know if there's any sort of connection thing at the little owl cam or where the, where the sound is coming from, but it's.
Would you disconnect that camera, use laptop? Obviously, we don't see you at all, but at least you can screen it. There is still that off.
Well, if we could just turn it on.
Is there anything on here? Something get dropped down the stairs?
Uh, they set it up and I think it dropped, so. Can maybe use the audio here.
Yeah, we just.
Just use the audio.
This way you can still screen your presentation.
Well, the audio is immensely better already.
Yep.
It is? All I did was turn it up.
Well, it's, it's like any technology. I sure haven't, I mean, I can see that you have cut your hair recently, Mr. Hewitt, but that's about it.
I know you're not talking to me.
It sounds like you were in my boomer comment. Well, well, listen, um, on the last stage, on BoxCast, everybody will be able to hear it and see it. And I can hear you guys just fine, as long as you can hear me, we're good. And now I'm gonna share the screen, and so.
Yeah, it's much better now, so thank you.
This is good. Thanks, y'all, sorry.
Try this out.
I'll whisper and put that on your wristband.
Let's have this pop up. Computer's very slow. Need a new one. Our new tech director is gonna get us a speed computer. Okay, uh, you at home, can you see this?
Yes, sir.
That is the crossing guards. We didn't think about the crossing guards. Uh, we had a 1:15 start time. Uh, I talked to Chief Board recently and he said, let me go over these slides here. Probably three of the crossing guards moved from high school detail to 10th Street detail here. I'm gonna go over it while I'm waiting for it. Uh, there's three crossing guards that you move. It's hard for them to get crossing guards, so they need the double shift just to make sure they're getting paid enough. Um, in the 8:15 and the 8:30 start times, high school and elementary aren't far enough apart for them to get up to 10th Street. So eliminating the extra shifts would lead to a loss of pay and they would have a hard time filling it in the end. They really do need the 45 minutes that are between the high school schedule and the elementary schedule in order to get up there in time. So the solutions would be pay the same cost for half the time, or, um, Chief said he would probably eliminate the guards on Allagany River Boulevard and Pennsylvania Avenue. And take precedence on the Hilton Road Guards. Or we move the elementary start times later, um, which causes some other issues on the back end in terms of the contract for the teachers. That would get the elementary kids out pretty close to four. Anyway, uh, we don't have solution. I mean, this just came up yesterday, but I just wanted to add this as an additional. They come up enough time, like ahead of time, for then they get the kids across and they go to school, like usually half an hour ahead of time. Because the kids, you know, at 10th Street, they, they open for breakfast at eight, and so, right, they, um, same at burner. So they're, they're early to get the kids across and then, um, the doors officially open at eight twenty, so actually they're there for that whole happen. Things are wrong. Yeah, the doors close, there's, uh, yeah, they're gone, so, but there's still just not enough time within that window.
Well, they would be able to get there early now.
Yeah, there's a time, yeah. So it's just another impacts for us to think about. Okay, I'm gonna go over, I don't know why this is a little lag on, Jen.
There's the spy channel, and it's not on Sunday time. Uh, it's not responding. Oh, there you go.
Okay, here's the stat data. Question given, like, so in, in the survey, I don't know if the, the parents, if you fill it out, but. I mean, people interact with the positive and negative outcomes, so the survey, built into the survey, they had to, like, deal with those things. So they, I, I was sure that when they answered this question, they knew specifically what the positive and the impacts were as well. So, uh, this is the stat one. Um, eighty-one percent don't wanna make the change. Nineteen percent are open to it. Uh, a summary of the open-ended responses said they're, they're worried about kids after school activities. They are, they just believe the kids are gonna miss, they experience kids now missing a lot of time for extra school activities, and they know that they'll miss more, so they're upset. They're not excited about that. Um, of course, they're worried about the poor students. Even if we do dual credits for the poor students, they still are missing an extra class, so it's, you know, if we could make it work for the poor students, probably the best thing for the poor students. Is that they just have the extra period, so they have the extra course, but, um, they mentioned that, um, after-school jobs and then commute for teachers. Was something that came up a few times. They're pushing the commute now into the rush hour tents, and some of that, especially that live. We have some that live in the South Hills, so that, that could be a concern for them, and then their families' schedules. Some teachers did, with some additional research to the contrary. Okay, here's the, here's the parents. So parents kind of came down a little, it was originally sixty-six, thirty-four, I believe. Uh, given the slides and some of the positive and negative impacts, it's kind of equalized a little bit more towards fifty, fifty, forty-three percent. And fifty-seven percent still say they're open to it. Uh, summary of those responses for parents, we got a lot of responses, we got three hundred and fifty-three respondents, which is a lot, I mean, it's about a third of our parent population. Now, it, well, it might not be, I mean, two parents might, two parents and one else, so I mean, I'm gonna fill it out. Great idea, that, some people like it, we love it, other people like, we don't like it. Uh, later start times, I assume some people are better. Current start times are for some people better. Um, later start time is a common sense approach, student mental is important, listen to the health officials. Other people sense a parent's job demands, sleeping their children, not the pool, it will negatively affect the children that are in extra kids' sports and. Prior times, the opinions of teachers and staff came up a few times. That's a summary of the parent data. Any questions? Any questions I needed to, so far? Okay, let me show you the students. This was interesting. These are great, seventh through eleven, got a pretty good response for the students. And, uh, sixty-eight percent said no, you don't wanna change it, and thirty-two percent were open to it, said yes. Um, some summaries of the kids', open-ended responses, and we have the, we have the slogan, please do it, I like it, and then a bunch of kids, please don't do this. Just literally says, please don't do this, um, numerous times, so I put it up here, and some say, change your health and focus, positive outweigh the negatives. Um, you know, of course, students saying the same thing as some of their parents, and it's going to negatively affect their after-school activities, their ability to get their homework done. And someone said, my parents have difficulty to drop off and pick up, and a couple of kids did say rush hour and, or difficulty picking siblings up after school. So that's the, we didn't have any student data last time, so that's pretty interesting to hear what the students had to say, so that's the student data. And that's the additional pieces of information I have for you this week. That's the data that promised I would go out and get for you. Any questions there?
If, I don't know if you, if you looked into it or not, but any thoughts on just having more flex in the schedule, and even if we don't change anything about the timeframes? Like, if people have concerns about, I was reading some of the students and or parents saying, like, front-loading classes or having certain classes available, certain periods, you know, things like that, just to be able to. Uh, more flexibility, especially for kids that maybe aren't athletes and do it in this night period, or, you know, whatever it is, it, there's ways to get around that.
I'll take the schedule, to make it like night period goes at one and one goes at nine. We used to do that all the time, like, do you know what I mean? Like, so if, if we kept missing too many days, or like night period kept getting cut off because of too many things, we might rotate the schedules so that. Nine starts at the beginning of your day, one ends your day. That way, you're getting in your classes with more efficiency. You can literally all hear from certain times of the day, like, when we do modify schedules here, let's say we do like a. Rally and we do modify the schedule, everything swims out, get those teachers making comments. There's just, some scheduling limitations would be small for the school. We did, we did look into, I know we said in the last meeting that it used to be a later time. And there, there was, we found out, it used to be seven.
Yeah, I think it was, yeah, it used to be seven, but it got started earlier, just for the reason of the athletes.
I think we started at like at one point, you know, like, uh, I think it was, yeah. I think with the little, I think it was seven fifty-five, they moved it back for the, because the kids were missing so much class, that's the reason why they moved it back, actually, back, back in the day, so. Um, that was interesting, we did, we did do some research on, yeah.
So not really essentially, like, there's not really any other creative scheduling, you can think of.
You know, unfortunately, in the way the schedule currently exists, there's not tons of like. Really, the, the, you know, the really high level, like, sort of AP tests and classes in the afternoon, which is, I guess, better. Like, there's still a couple though, right? There, what if, you have some A period, there's AP world history, right, in the afternoon, that's, that's in the morning. So if you think of eleven to twelve grade English or something, you have two regular classes, two AP ones, two sections with one grade AP, two sections with twelve grade AP. Um, you have that in eleventh grade history as well, you have two sections of AP, which, you know, US history, the passage during the other unit classes are similar. One, one AP camp, one AP bio, one AP physics, one AP cap. And they are spreading, the signings just tend to be in the morning, because then we can marry their lab period, so it's one and three with labs period two, right? So that, um, AP cal because of the middle of the day where kids can get it in, that opens it up for the electives, because AP kids tend to also be in band, orchestra, and chorus. So those tend to be in the afternoon, which really makes it harder, since we went from four music teachers to three music teachers, makes it harder for the elementary's schedule of music classes, because all the others are seven A now. Nobody knows more about high school schedule than what's been you have fifteen years. Fifteen years of manipulating schedule.
So, it's time, like, general question. There was, a student was having issues with academics, with, you know, medical reasons, that the first period wasn't working. There could be combinations made in some way for that.
Later start?
No, later start or something with a class or just like with a, somebody, a kid breaks their leg, maybe combinations. There, that's, you know, we already do that, and we have several kids that do that, right, yes, so it's.
Really bad, the biggest, maybe that worked out on us. With an AP, it's a little bit easier, we can share credits, but to get you, let's say you don't have an AP, and it might be, you know, short-term, like, oh, you're getting enough credits that you need. Or beginning where you need to be, you know, satisfy state requirements and individual requirements.
Other question. So some additional layers of information for it. Pretty interesting. I mean, the whole study has really been kind of interesting, and it's, it's worth our time, just kind of looking at all the different impacts, all the different things to think about. So I think it's time well spent to, to at least look at it from a bunch of different vantage points, so I'm gonna be doing that.
A lot of the responses mentioned, um, their comments are saying, like, this won't resolve in force leave, but that was never our intention anyway. It was the later cycle, that was the research that we had talked about, right, going. Staying this, staying asleep later, right, was the research we had talked about and we were given by the, the doctor who came to visit us and stuff, so, anyway, that's.
So, I mean, uh, I think, you know, one is sleeping, a little more in sleep is, uh, the, is the reason.
That's the idea, yeah.
It matches a scadian, it should get more sleep, you know, yeah, I think it was like, I think it was due at the times because of the circadian rhythms in your night.
And a lot of, a lot of the staff are mentioning, like, these won't, this won't increase test scores or whatever, and that was like, maybe one of the things we mentioned, like, wasn't like. The, 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 the increase test scores, oh, change the, you know, it wasn't.
I think anybody knows, I mean, there's, there's good research, there's, there's enough research to look into it, but, you know, we also don't have a crystal ball, our community is different, it's different, it's different, it's nice things. And I think nobody, nobody knows, I don't think kids would know exactly how it would affect them, I don't think staff would, nobody really knows, we just have to take as much data as we can. Put it into play and make a responsible decision. Ultimately, it's, it's the juice worth the squeeze, I mean, there's a lot of great research about a lot of great things. Is, is it worth all of the different, you know, impacts or, that's what we have to decide, and that's, that's not an easy decision, there's a lot of good information on both sides of it, so, anyway. That's what I have for today. Um, anybody else on that? Okay, Dr. Ch, go, please go over your G D C and your handbook changes briefly for us.
Dr. Turner? Go forward, you're recording. Alright, so this year's handbook, very, uh, simple, I've been really trying to clean it up, and trying to address some inaccuracies of the policies about the handbook. Um, if you're moving too fast, please let me know.
Is, are these, are they in the presentation section, because I'm not seeing.
They're down in.
Are they in some other section?
Down in the.
Education.
I swear I saw these, so now I'm not finding anything.
No, you're kidding.
Okay.
While you're looking for that, I also wanted just, I guess, to note the system that we follow when we update this, so we, we do pull in the various staff members that are in all different sections. So for example, the health office, full school nursing, uh, special education, Mr. Rochers, safety, Mr. Kenty, so we do try to pull in the individuals, uh, junior high, of course, junior high team. Um, so typically, I'll do multiple reviews, where I'll kind of look at it myself, look for anything that needs to be updated. I will obviously, um, compare that with district policy, which was a big list this year, and then I will send individual sessions via email to those individuals, individuals I just mentioned, just so we get feedback from them. Um, okay, so working down, so, uh, of course, we update the school calendar every year. By the way, do you have the edits breakdown document, or you just, or do you currently have? We have, okay, perfect, okay, cool. Okay, so ob- obviously updating the, the school calendar. Um, this past fall, as you all know, we did have to update district, district policy when it comes to attendance, so we did make sure that is reflected in the student handbook this year, so that's on page seven. Nothing crazy, I think there were some changes with, uh, the excuses we were allowed to accept and where that went. As far as special, special education, you'll see this a few different times throughout the handbook update, uh, thank you, Mr. Rochers, for the various updates. Um, so on page eighteen, for the services, that blurb was updated, uh, basically directly copy and paste, uh, to update that portion. Uh, page twenty-two, twenty-three, for the junior high grade seven to eight, these were recommendations from the junior high team, so first and foremost, we do not, we no, we no longer use the zipper and clothes binder. That obviously has the planner and the choice book, so it's no longer used, so we, of course, did strengthen that. Uh, we are changing the way that we are using planners in action, okay? So the thought was, we want students moving into ninth grade to have a nice blended method on how they can organize themselves. So for this upcoming school year, for seventh grade, they are gonna have the fart copy planner that we've been doing for years now. For eighth grade, we collaborated with the team, we're gonna do a more outlook-focused, so we're actually using Microsoft Outlook. And the goal was to hopefully get students using their email more, using their calendar more, so then when they do transition into ninth grade, they have the kind of learning experience with a, with a paper planner and experience online. A lot, and hopefully they maybe find something that works for them, whether it's one or the other, or maybe even a blended, uh, method of both of those. So we are making that change, which once again is down under planners. Um, the, the, the last part, if you look, I just, we never caught it before, there is the slogan, as far as series success, we can pull that out of there as well. As far as cell phones, we just changed from Will to May. I know in the beginning of the school year, I was giving an introduction to the students, uh, for opening day with, with the seventh, eighth, and ninth graders. As you noticed, ten, eleven, twelve, if we will talk about, basically, if they are not following their expectations of cell phones throughout the day, we will, we have the ability to not allow them to use it during their lunch period. So that is something we have flexibility with, we want to add that, add that in there as well. Usually it's more individual, but this is obviously giving us the overall flexibility. When we go down to the school counseling department, um, these are direct changes that were recommended from the school counselors. So, so first of all, just changing it from guidance department to school counseling, which is just the correct term. And then the, the blurb that we previously had, when they read through it, they felt like it was outdated, so if you look at the brand new blurb that's in there, that is coming directly from the Pennsylvania school counselor website. So that is a copy and paste, just so that it's reflecting what their responsibilities are, what their job looks like.
I have thoughts for one second.
Sure.
You're on page twenty-six, right?
I am moving on to twenty-six, twenty-seven, which is the personal technology of scouting.
Okay, yeah, just regarding the school counselors, uh, I had asked Dr. Goodson, or, uh, Mr. Hewitt, some of these questions about, like, who's doing what? In terms of, like, some of the counseling or guidance department, you know, tests, is that, like, outlined in here, or? Like, I didn't know, for example, that, like, ELA teachers are in charge of making sure that the kids are doing their job schedule this junior year, as opposed to, like, the guidance counselors following up on that, you know, like.
Yeah.
I guess, just delineating kind of like who's in charge of what, because like, as a parent, I guess I assume that, like, all of that kind of fell in the guidance department bucket. I know some of this is on, like, the high school website, but I feel like, you know, some of that might, might be better to actually have indicated in here, you know, for the kids to know, like, who to go to for what, you know? Because, you know, you and my kids sometimes like, oh, I think I talk to the ELA teacher, as opposed to, like, Mr. Kinnick, or, you know, like, who? Because it's sort of not, I guess, by default, I wouldn't think any teacher would be in charge of anything that's like school counseling, guidance-related, because that just seemed like it, it does to me, you know? Um, so I guess if any of that has changed in recent years, do we include it here to make sure everybody's, like, on the same page?
So you want us to delineate that underneath school counseling, is that what you're asking for?
I mean, I think it would be helpful to put it somewhere, I mean, if I'm, uh, I mean, Mr. Hewitt, I think we have your questions, you want to come up, like.
I need to focus on how we move all of college and career readiness stuff, to get into English classes, and it was never, it was never, the counselors, counselors create the PowerPoints that they use, but we would do it. In a activity period where the students would meet with mentor teachers, we never met with the counselors, you're saying to do any of that work. Anyway, they would do the resume, and the, uh, always, it's always been like that, like, right, right, David, like, back in, back before, even when we did the bully stuff, the whole base, you know, rooms with teachers. Right, Ms. Ms. Walsh used to be the head of, like, the seniors, or like your senior projects and stuff like that, and it switched to.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it doesn't matter if it was like that before or like that now, I guess.
Just knowing.
It's not, like, if I don't know any different, like, I would assume that guidance department is handling college and career and readiness stuff, and so to go to them and have questions, and I'd be like, oh, no, that's the ELA teachers. I think that's the first, it's not, I have a new, the school counselors work together with other student service professionals, which, oh, means that students, so I don't know, like, that's super. Yeah, evidently, like, I would just say for my own personal experience, it's not that clear, parent or student, it's just not that.
I don't think it's a problem also, if it runs out, like, who's working with me to complete this assignment as part of the college and career readiness, or do I have a question for my counselor about when my career is going to be? Those are like two different things, like, if I wanted to talk to them, what college should I go to if I want to be a chemical engineer? I would go to my school counselor as opposed to, you know, my English teacher to help me work on, who researched me.
Yeah, but also at the same time, to Jen's point though, and using your idea, doesn't the English teachers give the career exam, like, test that they take to see, like, what career? So again, I wouldn't think I'm gonna go to my English teacher to discuss my career options or.
Right, should you just seem strange, like, why is the English teacher in terms of the job shadows, so, like, it's, like. Yeah, it's, I guess it just, by, like, what you think, like, the buckets of who's doing what just seems confusing, and I'm saying from a parent perspective, just from what I guess, like, it's. Yeah, and it does, I'm not, I'm not suggesting, like, it needs to be, like.
I was thinking maybe, I'll see, well, maybe. I was thinking maybe, I'll see, maybe something different with school websites. Yeah, each thing we say, like, we see here this way, like, you know what I mean?
But even as students, I mean, and maybe, maybe I could be the only one that's a little bit confused, you know, like on some of that, but I, I do feel like there's been a couple of different things where it's like, oh no, that's the guidance counselor thing. Oh no, that's an E L A teacher thing. Like, it's not always been crystal clear, like, and what I would assume.
Not completely.
Is not almost the view.
So I'm pretty happy with you. I'm pretty happy with you. The color won't go on.
I think it is. I think it is. I'm pretty sure.
Each, each. I'll have the program, like a grade level program in an obvious of all the tasks that you have, you have a grade, grade level. But. Yeah.
So I'm not saying that.
Yeah, maybe there's something on the website.
There needs to be like, who do I go to for one piece of this? Like, because that's not real.
Yeah, these are, you can just have a list of the program, yeah, the seventh grade program, list of the tasks, you know, it'd be like.
This is all, yeah, it's. Yeah, you could create a list of that, cause you could, you could pull that right from Navi.
I think we already have that.
Yeah.
Like, I'm not.
I don't know if it's on there.
I'm specifically concerned with like the junior seniors, you know, that are like really needing to make sure that they're checking up all these things.
Yes, they have a fun.
And but then who F one, but then what teacher or what person do they need to like, you know, talk to, you know, for what?
These are the tasks, these are the people, like, yeah.
And also starting in year two, year year, also to be individual student, not all of those things.
Right.
Not those things that mean the college career readiness task, what they have to complete with state and those things that mean, what are your plans? Where you go, what do we need to work on?
Yeah.
You know, what information?
Yeah, I guess that, that's why I bring it up in here, because I just feel like this paragraph is like super generic and it really doesn't like say much, like it's, you know what I mean? It, it sort of checks the box of saying like what school plan is, but I don't know if it's worth putting it down to say like, you know, these types of things are done in the E L A fucking person's account.
Reference in the handbook. You can, you can, I'll reference, you can look to the website. And you could pull those, that, those programs, tasks, targets, have a list on the website and you could have a direct link. You could hot like it, I'm not to go and try doing that. So they have, and I don't think that would take much, much effort.
That's already done. It just needs to be more organized.
Yeah.
Sense. But you can find what you need to find. Yeah.
Yeah. Or it's not like, it's not a confusion point of like whether it's the student to be like, oh wait, I don't know who to talk to.
Yeah, I think that could.
I just don't.
Yeah, that might be best.
Yeah, I think that might be a good, a launch of. Um.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, jumping back, uh, page twenty-six, twenty-seven, uh, for the departure of Mr. Riz, he did give some feedback as the tech director. And basically he kind of took out some of the, the specifics that were outdated, such as, you know, iPods and P three's pagers. I changed it from three G to four G, just to save cellular. This way it just kind of covers us for everything. Um, and change control supervision. So once again, pretty, pretty simple, pretty simple stuff there. As far as tech goes. Uh, page twenty-eight, Mr. McKenzie had made once again multiple uh safety recommendations. This one would basically be just eliminating this part just because it's, it's not correct. There's no longer three levels of a lockdown. Uh, and lockdown is basically just a lockdown. This way it's nice and clear and easy for staff, just so there's no confusion on which level it's at. Jumping to page thirty, once again, uh, working with Mr. McKenzie regarding safety. Uh, we just changed it. So this way it specified it must be a government issued identification card uh for any visitation to a junior senior high school building. Moving on to page thirty-one for clubs and activities. We did have in addition during the school year, as you all know, um, kudos to Mr. Capson Mills for doing a junior high dating club. I know I've talked to him multiple times about that club and the students are really enjoying it. So we obviously added that here to the junior high activities. And then I had mentioned previously that um, one of the biggest lifts, super annoying, sorry, was looking at the select policies in the student handbook and then going back to district policy to make sure that they, they were correct. Uh, we made it so difficult. If you look at what's in the student handbook, it's not every, it's not the entire policy. So what I was trying to do was figure out like, okay, this is all the same, but wait, this changed. So any change that you do see is a, is a copy and paste. It's not my wording or anything. Um, and I tried to go apples to apples because once again, it's not an entire policy. So if there was something specific mentioned that makes change, I try to find it in the new policy where that same sort of thing was mentioned again. So um, that's about ten pages or so, as far as making sure that there are a select core policies that should be in the student handbook or in the student handbook. And once again, they were updated matching district policy. Jumping back to safety, another recommendation made by Mr. McKenzie, um, there is a safe walking around page forty-five. He suggested we add in some specifics for students and for parents, which are the highlighted areas, the little point areas below. And then finally, our uh pages, pages forty-six through fifty are annual public notice. Uh, thank you, Mr. Rochers, for updating all of that, of course, based upon the audit. And the new updated version is now in the handbook.
Any questions, anybody? Thank you also administrators and everybody on, on your hands and hands. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Finally, last but not least, I'm turning it over to our Steve Colling, Mr. Luber. This is uh, this is a whole bunch of you. Um, I want to thank you at this time. She's been grinding it out, working really hard, um, creating the budget. And she's excited to provide that to you this evening. She has a bunch of things passed out for you. And I'm gonna pull up her slides. She can look through that with you. Oh, yeah, hold on, I'm gonna share the screen here. Thank you guys. Hey, you all see that at home?
I have a black screen right now. It is, just came up. Yep, got it.
We, in our, in our recording, we'll put this on the website so that everybody at home, if they want to go back in there and see the slides.
Everyone at um Roger and Bridget, it's actually in that presentation under admin, if you'd like to peruse that, if you can't see this thing.
We can see this, or I can see the screen. I can't, I won't speak for Bridget, but I, I thank you very much. I'll pull that up as well.
Yeah, I can see it. Thank you.
There if you want to read it later, you know, just study it.
Can't wait. You don't have to ask me twice.
A lot of the, the pages of my presentation are duplicates, our framework and the focus in making sustainable adjustments to our budget without impacting the quality of what, what we provide the students uh of Riverview. So we need to make sure we're prepared for the uncertainty. We've seen some uncertain things happen. I mean, just last week, we, we lost a big tree out front and, you know, um, we have insurance, so those quotes are still coming in. Um, the basic budgeting concepts that we utilize in public sector budgeting. Um, we have, there's, you can go three different ways in a budget. If there's a zero-based budget, which would require me sitting down with each principal and administrator for probably about a day and a half. Cause they have to list every single thing that they planned on purchasing for the entire year. Um, there's a level of service budget, which is basing, um, which we kind of do already. We base it on the level of service, the number of teachers we have, the amount of staff that we have, the students that have I E Ps and the number of paras that we need. We, we do that and certainly we do a site-based budget as well, which is P D E is, they've gone back. Um, if anyone recalls several years ago, they did a your school is your money. They've, they've thrown something like that up against the wall again to see if it sticks. Um, it's now uh all buildings, other than, other than support services and obviously the three thousands, which are. We have a basic budgeting process. Um, we P A law sets forth a requirement for preliminary proposed and final, final general fund budgets. We did pass a resolution to state that we would not raise taxes above the index. Our index, our F one index this year is four percent. Last year it was five point three. Um, it, it's dropping now. Five point three is probably the highest this district has ever seen. I looked back today from the fourteen, fifteen school year forward, five point three was way, was the highest. And those are the numbers that are coming like post-COVID. Um, allowing districts who spent a lot of money, um, who got COVID funds in and spent that money and it kept that index a little higher so they could raise taxes to not have like a, a cold turkey budget here, right? A funding cliff, cold turkey. Um, so we passed the Act One resolution in January. We have to, we, we're required to have a balanced budget. It's the board's determination on how we balance that budget if we're out of, out of balance. Um, and budgets can be adjusted for an unanticipated windfalls of the state or federal fund. So if the state or the federal government come out next week and say, hey, every school district in the state of Pennsylvania um, is going to get one point three million dollars. We could open our budget back up and adjust that. We normally don't. I haven't, I have never worked in a school district in my career that's opened a budget back up. We just pocket that money aside and, and put it back into the fund balance to utilize for future years. Um, G F O A has a best practice for school budgeting. We plan, prepare, we set instructional priorities, which is why I met with all of the, the principals and administrators. We pay for those priorities. There's a plan implemented and we ensure sustainability. Several years ago, we received error funds in the district and um we were able to use those for a couple of years. But a lot of districts weren't really smart about how they utilized the funds cause they put it into something that possibly wasn't sustainable for years to come. So when we received COVID funds, um, which was prior to my starting here at Riverview, those funds were utilized for, for purchases that needed to happen at that time. There was a lot of infrastructure work that was completed. We did some, a lot of therapy with Blade Run, um, for kids that needed, you know, uh, there was, there was tutoring, there was after school. There were things that, that we could determine down the road if it was something that we needed to budget for. But it wasn't gonna be that funding cliff that we saw several years back when there. The basic education funding, Governor Shapiro's proposed twenty-five, twenty-six budget is, um, you know, everybody makes a big deal of it. It's every February. Um, he makes the presentation, everybody's there to, to clap or, or stay silent and nobody really knows what's happening until the, the final days of June, honestly. Um, it did include significant amounts for basic ed and special ed. But these are the smallest proposed increases that the state of Pennsylvania Public Schools has seen in over a decade. So our, our funding, our increase in funding for Riverview School District is less than fifty thousand dollars for, uh, for our kids. And it's a funding formula that they utilize. Um, special ed funding, again, smallest proposed increase, um, B E F and S E F total forty-nine thousand four hundred and some dollars. You'll see it in a minute. They did continue to fund the Ready to Learn Block Grant. We didn't see any loss or any addition to those funds. Um, so this is what we're seeing. Um, I don't place a proposal into my proposed budget. I like to wait until it's inked, until that, until that budget's inked. I, a few years ago, um, a lot of school districts were putting proposed these huge dollar amounts when Governor Wolf was in, was in office. And there were significant amounts going into B E F, but it didn't stick. And then you're, you're stuck with a budget that, that is out of whack five or six hundred thousand dollars, which I saw some of my, my colleagues. Um, they had a problem with that. So I, I know that we will receive less than what we receive. We've been assured, we will not receive less than what we received this year. So I have budgeted the twenty-four, twenty-five amounts. If we do receive the additional, a few thousand dollars, yay for us. I don't, I don't know that that's, that's not gonna be, that could be, you know, electricity rates could go up and that fifty thousand dollars could pay for three months of the high school. That's, um, it, it's just such an insignificant amount. It's a, it's a lot to us. It's not a lot to a, to a twenty-eight million dollar budget. He has um proposed P A operating budget appropriations, but a hundred million into physical and mental health and targeted grants, which we have received in the past. Um, school facilities improvement grants. The problem with some of these school facilities improvement grants is that we're required based on the size of our budget to, to pay a portion of the money. So if, if we have a twenty-eight million dollar budget, there are, there are budget levels. And if you have X amount of a budget, then you have to bring up, you have to make up thirty-five percent of the project. So if we came up with a wonderful project for Riverview School District that was a hundred, that was a million dollars, we'd have to come up with three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's, we don't want to look for ways to, have to find more money. We want to look for ways to get grants that don't have attachments. That's why when every time a, a, a teacher wants a, wants a grant, I had a, uh, years ago, I had a teacher that, that received this wonderful grant for new kiln in their art room. And it was fabulous. And it was like this five thousand dollar grant, but we were gonna have to do like fourteen hundred dollars worth of electrical work because of the plugs that work in the art room. So you have to look at, at complete costs when, when grants come about. They are still proposing increases to pre-k counts and early intervention. Um, he put money in for universal pre-breakfast. So as you know, that, that came about several years ago and it's sticking. Um, I know that there are people, there are people that are trying to make free lunches too. I personally would love that. Um, that would really kick out my cafeteria debt that I currently have. Um, we have. Um, he put increases into um tech schools and tech equipment grants, which I think, you know, if you've been to the tech school, I know I've been to, to Steel Center years ago, when I was in that area. Their equipment is extremely old. They, they can't just raise taxes and, and buy new equipment. It has to be through the schools that they serve to, to make those fun, to make those uh purchases. There's a student teacher stipend program. I will tell you that I did not put any money into our budget for this because it's really an in and an out. We had four um student teachers this year. Each one of them um qualified for the stipend. The money came in through the, the financial accounting system and it went right back out in an accounts payable check to the person. The uh principal Eric, um, he, he verified the teachers were in his room, who the, who the teachers, who the mentoring teachers were and all four of those teachers. So it was forty thousand dollars in, forty thousand dollars out, no need to budget it. Um, seven point five millions pro- proposed for professional development of educators. Um, for several years, people, um, they've been, they've been saying that it's uh, the teaching, teaching is a, is a, is not necessarily what kids are going to school for now. Um, we have, we have a decline in the number of kids coming out of college. So I think that, um, you know, the professional development and bringing, you know, maybe some of these student teachers in and, and getting them some P D and getting um, safety and security. He's included funds for safety and security for the school construction. Um, educator recruitment and retention, which I think is great. That's the ten thousand dollars food service. Um, these are just more detailed slides from what I just showed you. Um, what's not included? Uh, this year we received a small dollar amount for cyber charterer school reimbursement. It was under fifteen thousand dollars. Um, that's not in his proposed budget, so I am not including it in any revenue numbers that you see in these documents. The past scholarships plan con funding, which went away, wow, I, I think I was in my twenties. No, just kidding. Um, it went away several years ago and I don't foresee it ever coming back. We didn't talk about it every year, but it just kind of gets pushed to the side. Um, the minimum teacher salary was not included and the, the earned income tax credit uh in increases. He did have some additional proposed revenue, which was, um, I, if you've been to any restaurants and. He did have some additional proposed revenue, which was, um, I, if you've been to any restaurants in Allegheny County. Um, you might see video gaming terminals there. That is a proposed increase in revenue, legalizing adult use marijuana. Um, corporate net income tax reduction and the minimum wage increase is proposed. Cyber charter school reform, this is kind of where they were saying that the eight thousand dollars, um. I, like I said, I didn't include any of that in my revenues because it, I think it, it might have been a one hit wonder. Um, if we got thirteen thousand dollars straight, um, but, but I, I can't, I can't put our budget on the line without um some sort of guarantee that we're going to get. We're not going to spend the money that we spend and we'll get some sort of, of revenue. Yeah, that's.
Captain, they've been talking about that for years and.
Yeah.
The budget still is going through. Quite a bit of, I mean, they're, they're negotiating. So um in the past, that's been proposed. It's never really come to fruition, hoping that Shapiro can get it done, but.
They did.
No guarantee.
There, the, the refund, the money that I received uh this current year, the thirteen thousand four hundred dollars. Was uh, it just started in January. They, they hit that tuition, I think it was nine grand. And they hit the tuition that was um nine thousand for regular ed students. Then there was a calculation they put on to a special ed student. But thirteen thousand doesn't really touch what we spend in cyber and charter and, and order charter schools. So here are some of my key assumptions for the twenty five, twenty six school year. I think our property assessments are, are holding steady. Um, we still have building going on in, in Verona. Um, there, I, I drive across the whole bridge and I hang a left to go to Blonox and I look across and I see all the building going on. So that's the, one of the main reasons you see. Is it Oakland, is it Verona? It's down on.
I think it's still.
It's. It's a reverse. Okay.
Lot, lot.
Yeah. The lot area.
Has a little ways to go.
Okay, yeah. So that's one of the reasons why property assessments are holding step steady. Even though I received a record number of, of property um appeals this year. We paid out just in the month of February, over three hundred thousand dollars. Um, almost three hundred thousand dollars just to one property for three years on an appeal of a, a commercial property that sits empty in the school district. In, in Oakland. So I, I don't, I don't want anyone to think that, that property assessments are great. That paying out three hundred thousand dollars for one property, that, that was, that was painful. That was, um, yeah, that was unexpected, um, but had painful. Um, Peasars increase, we went from a thirty three point nine to thirty four percent. Previous year went from thirty four percent to thirty three point nine. I wish they just leave it alone. Um. Healthcare increase, um, if you remember when I gave a budget update last month, the healthcare increases that, that, at that time, we were looking at a nine percent and a five percent. Um, the consortium came back, um, used, utilized a little bit of their fund balance. Um, and gave us a five point seven and a three percent increase. We have, um, obviously contractual obligations. You have, you have your teacher's contract. We just passed the rest of the contract. Um, you have an act ninety three contract for all of your, all of your salaries and benefits. We also have contractual obligations with a, a lot of the, the repairs for the school district, the H V A. Um, you have transportation contractual obligations with, which I might add. Um, we are going to see that on the agenda as Allegheny Transportation has offered to freeze our rates for one more year. Um, so we can, we can lock that in without any increase. They did tell me that to expect at least a fifteen to twenty percent increase. Um, for next year, which is why we'll do an R F P and, and get the best price that we possibly can. Um, I, I, I questioned, I, I did talk to our previous I T director and we discussed at length tariffs. Um, and I, and you know, we watch the news and, and we don't really know what's going to stick and what's not going to stick. But I will tell you that we have one, two, three, seven cameras that are down right now in our district. And the gentleman was in my office the other day and we were reviewing cameras and replacing some of the older cameras in the district. And he told me that sooner rather than later, we needed to get a purchase order to him because effective May fifteenth, he was going to have to pay. Twenty five percent more on some of his cameras coming in and the cameras run anywhere from seventeen hundred to five thousand dollars a piece. So that, that made me add that next to the last, those last two. Um, bullet points because I, you know, we really don't know as a school district. I try to be this clearly responsible and I, you know, in my head, would I want to spend my money on that? What, what would I do if this was my money and I was, I was buying something? Oh, I'm a coupon flipper and I don't like to buy anything full price, so I wait for it to go and say, I'm a patient shopper. But you can't do that in a school district when you need, you know, new curriculum or, or computers that, that are slow and you need to replace it. Or an owl that's dropped and we need to get it back. So, um, so you know, my two, my last two bullet points were, you know, increased student tariffs on the horizon. Is that a possibility and will there be a recession? Is that a possibility? Okay, my future uncertainty, my little stick figure here on this question mark. Will the state budget be on time? Let's hope because I remember uh several, several years ago when the budget was not on time and it kind of freezes everything. We can't spend anything. You know, when July one hits, we need to start buying supplies and books and everything else for the new school year. But if that budget doesn't pass, we're kind of in a, uh, in a holding pattern. Um, will the increase step, increase the stick? It's fifty thousand dollars. It would be wonderful if they would stick. It'd be wonderful if they throw a couple more zeros on the end, but I know that's not going to happen. Um, charter school reform, will it, will it increase? Is plan con gone forever? My answer is yes. The economic impacts with the tariffs, um, investments in education and cost of goods and technologies and supplies. Um. C L R in Allegheny County. Uh, so this is a pretty wordy little slide, but, but what I will tell you is several years ago. If you buy a hundred thousand dollar house, it's assessed several years ago at eighty four point two percent of what you paid for it. When I bought my house in two thousand fifteen, I got a pretty good deal on it, I thought at the time. I bought it on March fifteenth and by March thirtieth, I was at the courthouse talking to somebody in the assessor's office. I got a discount on my, I appealed my taxes because I knew to do that. Um, but now if you buy a house for fifty, for a hundred thousand dollars, you're, we're only able to assess the, the county's only assessing at fifty four point five percent. So you can see where that affects greatly a school district that, that relies on local taxpayer, real estate taxes to balance a budget. I don't know about you, but I'd rather have eighty two percent than fifty four percent. This is our assessed value over the last several years. As you can see, our assessments are holding strong, a little bit about a million dollars less than it was last year, but holding strong nonetheless. This is a, a breakdown, a summary of general fund with prior years. Oops, it's actually twenty five, twenty six. Um, these were our actual audited twenty three, twenty four uh numbers. And this is, this shows our, our proposed final, uh, I'm sorry, the final budget here. These are the breakdowns of revenues. Um, local, obviously our, our real estate taxes and, and things that come in from the state. Uh, I'm sorry, things that come in from uh local real estate. And then the state taxes, which is our B E F, our S E F, um, we have, um. Several other state grants and funds that come in, um, the, the, the block grant. And then we have a small amount of, of federal funds that come in. Currently for the proposed final, I have revenues of twenty eight million, three hundred and thirty five thousand. Our expenditures on the other side of the coin. Um, I have instruction, support services, operation of non-instructional services. Facilities, construction and improvement and other financing, which is our debt service. And I have expenditures of twenty eight thousand, four hundred and fifty thousand, twenty eight million, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So currently I'm showing up, uh, we are, we are over expenditures by a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. In prior presentations, both Dr. English and I have discussed the fact that we don't really have a lot of, of, of movement. Most of our funds are, are contractual obligations. We have salaries, we have benefits, we have contractual obligations. There's not a lot of movement, um, there's not a lot of money budgeted for pencils and paper and, and, you know, things that. Things that we can just cut without cutting it completely. Um. So I just want you to know that, that I think this budget is, is a pretty tight budget. I think that, you know, when I started working with it, I was, I was slightly concerned knowing that B E F was coming in at such a, such a low rate. And that special ed was coming in at such a low rate. Special ed's like a moving target because you, you're required by law to, to provide services regardless of whether you have the money or not. And special ed funds don't cover a third. Twenty five percent of what we actually spend on, on our special ed population. These are my breakdowns by function. Um, again, the board, you have, you have detailed information. Um, these are documents that a previous board member showed me that he received back in fourteen fifteen. Yeah, there are two documents. Um, so that has really everything. Um. That, that, and if you have any questions whatsoever, please, please give me a raise, shoot me an email. Um. He, here are our expense percentages by function. As you can see, uh, more than half of our funding, uh, of our expenditures is in, in instruction. And that would be your regular ed and your special ed. Um, this includes all your tuition, um, for our approved private schools. It, it, it's for, you know, anything that has, anything that's a one thousand function is, is money going towards kids. Salaries, benefits, books, all of that. Support services, those are our two thousand function. That includes your nurses, your guidance counselors, um, your directors, special ed. Your, your superintendent, all your principals, those are your two thousands. The non-instructional services, um, those are, those are moving down into athletics. Um, your, your three thousands, four thousands, our facilities, constructions and, and building services, not a lot of money there. Um, but, but it is something that's, that's always been budgeted. And then our debt service, which is our, our bond issues that we have had. I think our oldest bond issue is a, a two thousand ten bond issue. We have three more, three more payments on. So three more payments of about nine hundred and ninety five thousand dollars a year, but nonetheless, only three more payment. Um, these are our percentages by object. So, uh, salaries, benefits, purchase services, you see that the majority of our expenditures. Um, are over seventy, it's like seventy one percent are salaries and benefits. So you can see that, that those are contractual obligations, just salaries and benefits. Um, the purchase services, the transportation, the tuition, um, insurance, those are also contractual obligations. Of your, of this twenty eight million dollars, the only thing that's. That's, I, I hate discretionary, I didn't want to say flexible, it's really not flexible. Um, are your supplies, equipment, books and software. We have a significant amount of software that's also contractual obligations that's included, included in this line item. Um, we purchased, uh, I just got the bids back from, from paper. So eight and a half by eleven paper is, is going to be almost twenty four dollars a case. Um, and, and um, legal paper is going to be about, about thirty five dollars a case. I normally buy about seven hundred cases for the district. Last year I, I had the custodians go down and count the number of boxes. I talked to the principals, you know, who's hoarding paper, uh, those kinds of things. So last year I, we had a significant amount left over. I think they were hoarding it during covid, nobody told me, and I had somebody count, so I was able to cut that purchase down last year. Um, but, but what I can say is even this, this one point four million dollars. Software, that's a large portion of that and those are contractual obligations. Those are the software programs that all of our students and our guidance counselors and, and the, the superintendent uses and, and I use. So, um. These are our revenues. Um, a lot easier to just, to discuss here. You can see that our, our current real estate taxes of our twenty eight mil, a little over twenty eight million, almost seventeen million are in real estate taxes. In this budget, um, instead of including a four percent increase, I have included about a two point two percent increase. Um. Just to show you where, where we landed. Um, the four percent would allow us to raise taxes point nine nine and some change bills, less than a mill. Last year we raised taxes point eight mills. We could have raised taxes one point two seven six, I believe. Um, but, but I did include a small increase in this, in this dollar amount. Um, which brings us to being out of balance by a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. But you'll see, I did, I did increase, I went in, what I do every year is I go in and I look at, you know, what did we bring in in earned income taxes? Because it's, it goes up every year, but it doesn't always go up. I remember in covid, we, no one was really working. So I had to cut my budget significantly at that time. Um, and I'm glad I did because we didn't get the money. Um, delinquent real estate taxes, that, that is up, I did increase that substantially. I wasn't quite sure how M B M was going to come through, but they came through, so. Good job, Alco. We, uh, I, I, I went back in like this basic ed and, and social security, our basic ed and special ed, those are last year's numbers. So again, that'll go up, you know, a little under fifty thousand dollars. Medical and dental, that's the Shar's report. Property tax reduction, um, that went up around eighty thousand dollars this year. So the state sent us out our letters on May first. I'm glad we got it when we did, so I could include it because it was only about, I think, five hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars last year. So that means everyone in the district that has a homestead, farmstead property, they will get a, a little bigger piece of the pie in a reduction on their tax bill. Um, this is the ready to learn grant, that's changed not at all. The retirement, social security has fluctuated a little bit, only because we increased some of the salaries per the contractual obligations. However, um, we did, we did have four retirements, so those are included in these numbers. Um. Title one, title two, title one, title two, title three, title four. Those dollar amounts are based on last year's and uh medical assistance reimbursement. Uh, which I don't think anyone ever budgeted. Uh, we have a, a small, I, I reach out to the, to the feds every year and, and it's through the F A I accounting system. And I request funds back for what we send to them quarterly for medical access. This is our breakdown of the local, state and federal revenues. You'll see that the tax burden weighs heavily on the taxpayer in Oakland. For, um, that's. Unfortunately, it is what it is, but our, but our local tax basis is our bread and butter. Um, we, we try to do a really good job of, of keeping taxes low here. I know that's probably not what everyone thinks. However, I did go back into, um, into some previous uh tax increases and, and, and noticed that, that in several years of the past decade. Or more, the taxes were not raised or I don't think we've ever raised taxes to the index in our school district. Prior to coming to River View, I didn't go, I didn't work in a district that didn't raise taxes to the index. That wasn't necessarily because of me. That was, that was because of, of what the state is doing with their budget. Here's some millage rates around us. Um, you'll see that currently our millage rate is a twenty four point nine four zero nine. But I added this column last year because even though you'll see that Hampton and Shaler. Um, their rates, their militaries, the twen, like Hampton's a twenty three, but their mill's worth over two million dollars. Our mill is worth under eight hundred thousand dollars. So if you multiply the millage. So if you multiply the millage times that, and then there's a calculation in, in the financing software that I use for the state that we put in an estimated collection. So we don't just put the dollar amount that it calculates out to. We use real numbers on what our collections are from previous years. In this budget, I did increase the collections. I was new last year. I didn't want to, I didn't want to over, overestimate collections, but I did increase it a percentage point this year. It's, it's at ninety-six percent in this. People pay their taxes here, that's a wonderful thing. X one index of four percent, and what does a millage increase mean to the homeowner? So this amount right here, this two point two three percent, that's what I've included in the current budget. That estimated annual increase based on the assessed value of your house at a hundred, one fifty, two hundred or two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it goes from fifty-five ninety-one to a hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents. Nowhere on this, on this spreadsheet, on the, does it show an increase over, over two hundred and fifty dollars if you have a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar. So yeah, I've included a percentage increase of two point two three, two point three four, and the total index of four percent. I, I, I took these out to four only because I'm, I'm really a fan of round numbers. This again is what the millage increase means to Riverview on the assessed value, the increase in millage and, and what that dollar amount means. So additionally, last year, we had some additions to our budget. If you recall, we had some, some kindergarten classes that were, that were skewed. We had, you know, higher numbers at, at one building and not the other. We, we, I think, I think we brought in our special ed director. That, that was, that was one of the items that, that if we, if we needed to make a cut, obviously she didn't, we kept her, so. But, but without really having, we don't have a lot of, of flexibility in additions that we're making this year. We did add, in this budget, I did add security guards. And, and that's a mandatory thing for the state unless, unless you, unless you waive it. But, but I don't think that's, that's something that, that the district's going to want to cut. You know, we look into student activities and student activity, transportation and athletic supplies, dues and fees. So I've kind of made some, some estimations here on, on what, what could be cut. You know, if this forty-nine thousand dollars comes in with basic and special ed, what's the remainder that would need to be cut if there wasn't any increase? This is the hundred and fifteen thousand dollars with that two point two three put in the current budget. You know, what would we cut? Would we cut something in student activities? Would we cut athletic supplies, dues, fees? And then if we increased to this point seven five nine one, which is three percent instead of four percent, that actually leaves everything just the way it is. Now, it's May. I've got work to do. I'm going to go back, I'm going to sharpen my pencil. I've already done an audit of all the salaries and, and benefits. I backed out all of the, all of the co-pays that, that, that people pay on their healthcare for their contractual obligations. I, I still have a couple quotes coming in for insurances, so none of those changes were made. But, but this is where we are right now. And, and I, I think a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars out or, or five hundred if you tell me to take that increase out. I've, I've had preliminary budgets that were two point five million dollars on the budget. So I'm pretty happy with this one right now.
Sorry, I don't understand the special ed line all being the same. The forty-nine, yeah. It's estimating, sorry, can you just explain?
The first line would.
Yeah, that's, that's the basic ed subsidy and the special ed subsidy with a question mark on it that we might or might not get.
Gotcha.
I'm, I'm hoping they just, you know, throw another zero on and we can call it a day. That is what I have, ladies and gentlemen. This is our, our timeline. See, I did put the right date on there.
So that is voting.
Isn't that the date, sir? We have one on the schedule, but that's only if needed. Right.
That's true, yeah, July is the combined.
We are adopting the proposed final budget next Monday. We're going to refine the budget data. We will make the proposed final budget available for public inspection by the end of the month. Read in the paper that we're to adopt.
We're going to go through this, June second, June twenty-third.
Which one? Which one, sir?
The, starting on page four.
Of this one?
Yes, of the thing, yeah, the big boy. The alt ed and detention, five thousand? Those are our services, those are buying seats. They're all there. If a kid goes out for forty, I believe, correctly, if I'm wrong. It goes out for forty-five days. When there's something that happens, we have agreements with, that's our agreement with these four. Okay, that's how much in class in case that happens. Sometimes it does.
I keep money in that account only because when I started here, we did have a student who was placed out in the middle of the state. And there, there wasn't any money budgeted at the time, I don't think. So I keep funds in there as a just in case.
No, I got you, I just didn't know if it was like, if that was like just a stipend for detention teachers or.
So your five, your five hundreds are, are tuition, your five sixties are, are tuition line item.
And then, um, page five. So I went out of the totals for supplies, burner, and then to ten street. It looks like twenty-one, two for burner, twenty for ten street. Ten street has a general supply fund of fifteen thousand. What is in convest in that general supplies line item that's fifteen thousand dollars?
So they, they haven't changed their budgets at all since I've been here? They just move it around based on where their needs are. So normally in the middle of the school year, this Dr. Z might reach out to me and say, hey, I need something for the music department. I only have five hundred dollars budgeted for them. Can we do a budget transfer from that general supplies into the art account?
Can I get that? I think, my, I guess my thing is though that burner has a, a general supply fund of three thousand. Just seems.
But they have significantly more funds.
Oh, no, I agree. Agree, it's, it's dispersed.
Right.
It's dispersed more and well. I, I agree with that because that's why I said, like, that's why I did the totals first. Because I wanted to like look at apples to apples.
Right.
Before kind of getting into the need for it, but I.
I think that, I think, I think here, my personal opinion, and Dr. Z can correct me if I'm wrong. He knows that his teachers know if the money's there, they'll spend it. But, and, and that's kind of how teachers are. But, but, and they come to him and say, hey, I need this. Then he makes the determination at that time, puts the money into the correct account and then it gets purchased.
Sure.
And for the record, Dr. Z didn't move really a single thing in his budget this year. He, it, it works. It works, the principals do a great job at, of, yeah, and they don't really move money around much unless, of course, one of their teachers would come to them and say, hey, my, my kiln broke or, you know, something like that. Junior high moves money everywhere. Everywhere.
And then on page seven.
Yeah.
The life skills. So we have a life skills, general supply is fund here. And, but then on like another like four fund, maybe, maybe like, so then there's a, a home economics also as well that has a general supply fund, so I didn't know what the difference was there.
Sorry, what you said, I see the life skills.
Yeah, so then, so on.
Page?
Page seven and then page sixteen. There's home economics for six thousand, then.
So home economics, that's in the thirteen sixty, that's, that's Bard Stewart's groceries.
Okay, and then this is for support or special education.
So supplies, supplies are what they are for what, whatever in classroom.
Different.
Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah.
And then page twelve. At the bottom, there's the testing amount. So burner's testing for gifted support is only about one thousand, but ten streets is thirty-one hundred. Are we not testing our students at burner the same amount that we are at ten street or?
We only have, what's the number of students? There's only one hundred and sixty-eight students and you have three hundred and, you have four hundred. Yeah, so.
Right, but that's still a hundred, less than a hundred students different. So if we're looking at it, we're, that's not, it's still not.
Two hundred, it's two hundred and thirty.
She just said three hundred in some.
No, four hundred. Four hundred and a hundred and sixty-eight.
Right. So it's more than double. And the budget isn't double.
But we, do we test, do we, we don't test every child, do we? Okay.
Oh, yeah, on page eighteen. No one's, no one's saved, sorry. Guidance services, their professional fees are fifty thousand.
The fourth line on the top.
Yeah. And I also don't expect you to know all of these right now. Like that is very impressive that you've made it fourteen hundred.
Yeah, I said, now, he's looking at page eighteen, twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two. No, that's a, that's a salary account, but that's also, that's also a, like an extra duty account.
Exactly.
That's a, no, it's a, it's a salary account, it's an extra duty account.
Yeah, I just couldn't figure out the, I'm like, I'll get back to you.
Yeah, I'll get back to you on that, sir.
That's separate from junior senior. That's separate from the junior senior high guidance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's like salaries that are. But that's for like all buildings or is it just one?
Yeah, I know, that's, that's for the high school, but I think I might have accidentally put it in the high school and it goes to all of them. So it would, it would be broken down.
Summer hours here.
Yeah, I mean.
The summer, it's extra stipend.
Yeah, that would be summer hours because they get X number of hours of. Yeah, let me look, because the, the contract gives them X, up to X number of hours at their per diem rate, X number of days at their per diem rate. So.
Let us cover any, any.
Well, they, they're X number of days after school ends and then they come in X number of days before because they get time sheets.
Regardless of building, like.
Yes, yeah, so it would have to be broken out.
Elementary has days, high school has more, more days. As per the last.
So if that needs broken out, I'll, I'll take care of it. I'll just get broken out into the tenth street.
You can suss that out.
Yep.
Um, and then to page twenty-one, that's the quest stack. So quest stack is going to be two-ten.
I put extra in there because we owe them hours for, they haven't billed us for the, for the PSSAs. So I had to, I had to put some flexibility in there.
I got you, for the bench player.
For the bench. Back that out, I just don't want to get into.
Um, and then page twenty-two. There's a Seneca Valley line item for sixty thousand.
Yes, that's, those are our, our cyber.
Those are our extra seats.
Our personal cyber.
Yeah, high school, that's the high school.
Right, but knock out, not, not another cyber, that's our cyber.
Yeah, teachers over, but the, the courses are. The contract is through seven. We just increased.
Yeah, we just increased that because we had additional. Additional students.
And then I'm, I think I know the answer to this one, but the, at the bottom of that same page, there's three librarian salaries, but we have one current librarian, is that right? She travels to all three. And so is it just broken out by school?
That's exactly what it is.
The amount, okay.
And also included in that is extra duty.
Makes sense. And then page twenty-four.
You went through this quick.
I did. I, I was a little. As you're.
You were looking at me, weren't you?
No, I got you, I heard it all and. Look, I can concentrate very well.
Twenty-four?
Give me a vacation. Um, yeah, um, the director of student achievement. What is that? Or who is that? First that. It is under professional services salary or personal services salaries, the middle of the page. Ninety-one, seven fifty.
Double check something.
Because I thought I saw someone, and I thought I saw, because the only one I could think of would be, this is.
Yeah.
Grocer, but I thought I saw her in special ed, so that's why I was like, maybe I got it wrong. Yeah, I thought I saw her somewhere. Special education.
Let me pull that because I have a spreadsheet that has everybody's numbers attached to them.
Yeah. But again, I do not, I don't expect you to know all of these.
If it doesn't belong there, it belongs somewhere else because all of my salary amounts for that object balance to money.
And then at the bottom of the, or at the bottom of twenty-five, there's books, curriculum development for a hundred and seventy-nine thousand.
That's, that's perfect. We, they, they actually, I, I backed down a little bit of that this year, it was like a hundred and eighty.
But it isn't worth like, is that different than like books and stuff? That was, it was just a severe upgrade of.
Yes, it's different. It's different because the, the schools, the buildings buy consumable books. So they buy their, they buy consumable books. This is actually on a schedule each year that, that Dr. English and I, he gets quotes for it.
Loan of projected amounts for high school social studies. Uh, K through six, TCI was just an upgrade of their current regular resources. And an eighteen thousand dollar. And um an eighteen thousand dollar. Uh world language. Resource. Um, and then. Page twenty seven, just so that I understand the board allocations, so. We have fifteen thousand listed for other professional services. And I originally was thinking legal, but then legal is actually on page twenty nine.
So that would be. Board docs?
Twenty eight.
I think that's part of our. Is it, oh, that's.
P S B A is on, on ease.
I think that's board docs.
It's also on twenty nine.
Board docs. The software that we.
I thought board docs was only supposed to cost like fifteen hundred dollars.
Did you say you did see P S B N?
Yeah, that's twenty nine, it's at the bottom. There's P S B A, P A S A, A A S A.
I will pull that account tomorrow and I'll let you know exactly what's been. Twenty three, ten is also um.
And then. Also, um, board services advertising for six thousand.
Yes, um, we have to advertise board meetings, I have to advertise R F Ps, um.
We only have to advertise our, our board meetings like once a year, right, at the calendar year when we set, select the dates.
And any changes and any construction projects that. And we're gonna be doing that next year when we start doing work at the cafeteria.
Um. And then the. These fees on board services. Um. Three seventeen, five, ten.
I'll bring that. And verify what's been extended to it.
Security services, the two hundred, that's for the future. What we said we have to.
The security guards, yeah, yes.
Two, and then two.
Two people, yep.
One's gonna alternate and one down here, okay.
Then we have two tax assessment collective services line items, one under. Three hundred and then one under the eight hundred section, I think, or six hundred section. I know, I mean, it supplies clearly, but I guess I'm like.
So we pay a commission to our tax collector. Um, that's, that's one of them, and then the, what did you say we paid?
There's six hundred, sorry, it's on um page twenty.
So that, that twenty three, thirty, six, ten, that, I'm sorry, you said supplies.
Yes, ma'am.
Tech, that is for our act one mailing, we have to do annually to notify, um. Live in the district that um for the, of the home state, part of state mailing.
That makes sense.
And to mail tax bills.
That makes sense. Um, on each one to nine.
Hmm.
Sorry, Dr. English, I'm kind of demented. Um, Office of Superintendent Services has twelve thousand dollars at the top of the page.
Um.
And then um. Halfway down the page, this applies the public relations for the superintendent. That's for. So some of those are dues. We only think our dues are at the bottom of the page.
So those.
We pay all of our dues in one night. Right, right, so I'm like.
But that doesn't, that thirty five hundred doesn't cover P S B A. That's just thirty five hundred, that doesn't, that twenty three, ten, twenty three, sixty eight, ten.
Yeah.
That is, that, those are the superintendents, um.
Dues.
Dues and fees, not the, the, the dis- the district. Because P S B A is significantly more expensive.
Yeah. Yeah, we can pull that.
Yeah.
You know, if I go to a conference.
Would that be for the calendar for the year?
Send out in the uh like relations, like.
Like the state of the district.
In the district and the re- reform. Things, I live there, mailing some things like that.
I was just looking through the, all the athletic items, so forty, page forty two, forty three. And. I, I don't wanna ask all my thing, but um. At the bottom, there's two line items that say student athletics uniforms, and they're very, one's two grand, one's forty two grand.
Um, let's see. Is that the bottom?
Uh, yeah, bottom of page forty three, the last two lines. Student athletics uniforms.
So.
I was just curious, what?
So the zero, zero, the, the, the two thousand dollar win?
Yeah.
That's kind of a, a what if somebody needs, like what if somebody moves into the district and they need, you know, this size, but we only have that size? The forty two thousand that's budgeted, those are all of the uniforms that are in the cycle, uh up. The um, the football uniforms alone, I think, are close to twenty thousand dollars.
That's the five year cycle, whoever's next.
Yep, yeah. And I'll go back and I'll double check all of those. No, band, so they have a band. It is banned, but we have, we're pushing, not because we don't love band, but. But we're pushing them off because they have so many uniforms that are still like brand new. I think when they last purchased. Uniforms, they must have thought that they were putting uniforms on three times the amount that we used to have.
We could pull that out.
Yeah, yeah.
We could pull the uniform. There were a hundred and fifty kids in the van.
Makes sense.
Yeah, so, so those uniforms five years ago.
Yeah.
Put uniforms on the kids that were there then, but now I don't know how many kids are in the van.
About thirty.
Okay, so that makes sense. So there's lots of, of. Good uniforms.
So who's, so what's the next cycle then? Which teams? I'll have to pull it from Andre. Um, obviously, because some are not much and some are a lot.
Yeah, yeah, like, yeah.
Football versus soccer.
And football, I think, or what did we say we were, we were putting uniform, how many uniforms, we were getting more than we had on the team, I know that.
I can't remember, sorry. I got, I actually know this stuff, because I've talked to Andre about it.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, it's okay.
I'm also, on page forty one, speaking of athletics, um. Says professional other salary coaches, two hundred and four thousand. Um, it's page forty one and under the two hundred section.
Mm hmm, yeah. Thirty two fifty one, thirty one.
This is your coaching, that's all your coaching, it's all salaries.
They cost that much?
We have a lot of.
There was a break. Thousand dollars or like three thousand dollars.
You got an assist, a head as an assistant for every sport.
Yeah.
At least.
It's crazy.
So they don't get paid much for how many hours they put in.
Yeah.
And we don't give them more, we just give them what we give them.
Very works. Um. Page forty three. Student athletics, general supplies, education is six thousand.
Hmm.
Forty three, so, yeah, page forty three.
Yeah.
What do we use that?
Um, that's really kind of Andre's account. If we, if we have a, a team that, that wins and needs, you know, um. Those are for, for um track pins, those are for awards, those are for banners, those are for.
Whenever they go to Whittfields or States and they have to get a bus and pay for them to eat. Stuff like that.
But that's different than on page forty four or forty one, then athletics and event, events. I mean, that's under personal services, I don't know what that is.
His salary.
Of.
One hundreds are, are salaries, if you look up, up above that, the thirty two fifty one ten. It says one hundred personnel services salaries, and then you go down to two hundred, which is salary, which is benefits. And then three hundred, then four hundreds are purchase services. Five hundred's purchase services and then up.
But on, on the last, that last line item, on page forty one, it says salary.
No, athletic and event, that, you mean that thirty two fifty two thirty?
No, ninety six, four. Like.
Yeah, the, the account number's thirty two fifty two thirty.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
That two thirty line item, that's Peasars, thirty four cents on the dollar. For all of the athletic and events.
Family ID is twelve, okay.
I know, that's what I was thinking.
Just with that system.
Um.
That seems like so high for like what it does. Like, just like software essentially, right?
And my dossier on it is page forty four, the ten string um auditorium manager.
Oh, I changed that, that's fitness. I changed that wording, I swear to God I did. I knew I did it before I printed this out. It's, you have to change it in like four different areas, I, yeah, that's actually fitness.
Fitness.
Fitness, very, yeah, that's what we did with those funds last year. Are we, um, we're filling all the positions. That's included in my, um, it's included in the budget, I did replace them with uh masters one or masters two. And put in, and put in insurance for family. And do you know, like, um. For job with the taxes this year, but do you know what we have outstanding? I'll email that. Just curious, see if we're paying that future. Yeah, I, I, I. I think with having one full year under their belt now, um, and I, I just mentioned this to me today on the phone. We can't. No offense, Falco, but the low hanging fruit is the low hanging fruit, right? So Jen Surs doesn't, Jen and her team do a great job of, of going after people, there's like noble's bar, if I know one thing. I'm glad that Jen Surs is, and I get along great and have a great relationship, is that the only, she's not the nicest person on the phone, wouldn't you? And she's smart as a whip, so, but, but.
Always empathetic.
Everyone.
I'd be interested to see though what that collection rate looks like.
Okay.
With the new.
She did just send me a letter, I searched for it when I was running out the door today to get here, so, um. And, and it, it, that, that data actually shows what the appeals have been and what the, um, what the additional. Uh assessed values, the assessments have been throughout the year, I know that's something that, that. The gentleman in the orange has, has asked for before, so I'll get that out to everyone.
We put this together too, I think this is a kind of a nice overview. Document for you, it's got some nice details, a little easier than trying to go through, you know, fifty pages. Um, so hopefully that's helpful to you. Any other question?
I'll make thirty two slides, sorry.
I do have one answer.
Yeah.
Page fourteen, business education salary. Yeah, like, is that? Um, it, it's.
That's a teacher salary.
Okay.
The one twenty one to notice a teacher. I've been doing these codes for twenty five years, unless there's a new funding source that I don't quite know yet. I could probably. I see them in my sleep notes, yeah.
Any other questions?
Well, we do one of those like budget at a glance things for the website.
Yeah.
Uh, as well, just an updated one, or whatever's changed, just for the general public. Because obviously, we get this bulk of, you know, numbers, but it's overwhelming for those that are not as familiar.
Not one page traditionally put out.
Yeah, there's like a couple graphs and like some bullet points, just to try to get people like an overview, like, doesn't have to be. Exact, you know, but at least it helps people understand the general.
Yep.
Scope of it.
And Sheila, this is breaking, it's, it's big, but it's, it's good.
It's helpful.
Yeah, this is definitely.
Is that what you were looking for, Mr. Carter?
Yes, I, I really appreciate it.
Neil came into me today and he's like, are, are you gonna have, like, I said, I got it.
This is, much appreciated.
Very welcome.
Lou, once again, I just wanna thank you. Look, you've been going a lot of work in this.
Do not disturb.
Jeff walked in at like a little after nine, he knocked you open the door and went, not today. Not today.
And it, and it, but it served you well. Okay. Let's keep rolling here, uh, let's move into the first hearing of citizens.
Sorry, thanks, just one quick thing, unless we don't have Mr. Carter to do the athletics.
Yeah.
Book update, will we have him do that before voting meeting next time?
No, I think we're gonna push, keep. He wasn't, he didn't realize he was supposed to do that, so he's at the cross country banquet.
Oh, yeah, don't worry.
I think there's such a few, there's really a couple things.
It wouldn't take that long to have him.
We could, you, you can, okay, you, you're saying maybe you can come.
Can he come to the voting meeting, just sort of do a quick review?
We're gonna push it back to next month, but he could do that.
I mean, it doesn't seem like a lot.
Maybe you should then, because they don't come to our voting meetings, so not, so that he doesn't have to come next week, who's not coming tonight?
But he's not coming tonight, is what I meant. Just flip, flip, you know, just gotta come.
But it's also a man.
If there's only a couple things, be ready, but it's not.
There's only two things.
Maybe just ask him if that work.
Come next week, we'll add a.
Then that way we don't have to delay voting on it, that's all.
Okay, no, that's a good point.
And if it doesn't work for his schedule, like.
Check out smart, we can do it, that's fine.
Yeah. After eleven. Okay. Anything else before we move into the first hearing? Okay, let's move into our first hearing, these are for agenda topics only, you'd like to speak, sign in, up to the mic. I'm up to the middle, uh, state your name and address and try to keep your comments to three minutes or less. Keep in mind that the board does not typically respond to public comment, rather takes the hearing into consideration for future governance. Also, please realize that all comments and meetings are recorded.
Okay.
Well, good evening, everyone. Hi, my name is Cynthia Gajetta, um. I did send an e- and I live at five ten H Street. Um, I did send an email the other day to everyone here, um, as well as Dr. English in regards to the possibility of the time change. And, you know, I just wanted to reiterate just a couple of things of just. You know, what always comes to my mind is the students and they, they come first, and that's where. You know, my main concern is making sure that they don't lose out. That's number one. Number two is to make sure that. We have to, you know, just hearing what Sheila just presented with the budget, I mean, everything we have to think about it budget, in a budget conscious. You know, within environment, because, you know, as I stated in the email, you know, it takes a lot of time and effort. And when you add that time, money, you know, could that be well spent? In other things that are more important to the district, for the staff, the students and so forth. Um, you know, I, I, like I outlined in the email, like, I just feel that. This time change is just sending the wrong message, I think, you know, these kids are gonna be at a disadvantage, and even with the survey. You know, I don't know what the kids survey looked like, the student survey, like if there was a little bit more context in it before they answered it, because. Of course, what kid is gonna say no to being able to sleep in? You know, but I, I don't think there, you know, as we think through as adults, you know, it's like, oh my gosh, like. They're gonna come home later, they're gonna have less time. They're gonna come home later. They're gonna have less time. They can't be kids anymore because they don't have time to even breathe and decompress. You know, you're adding that, you know, they have their whole life. As adults to stress out and have no time and and have that breathing down your neck, but. I just think the schedule, if it's not broke, you don't need to fix it. Don't fix it. That's the same as it goes. If it's not broke, don't fix it. So I just, you know, I'm just strongly against it. I feel it's just a disservice to the kids. It puts them at a disadvantage. You know, it's just sending the wrong message and I think for parents and students alike, you know, then this just opens up to what else? It's like, well, if we can get this, then what else can we get changed? And I'm not saying there's not opportunities, but it's like what makes sense to do, you know, and to me, this is like a huge, huge lift. In both time, effort and like thinking about like, okay, we've got cross guards, like how are we gonna ensure? And safety is also number one. I mean, we've to to the thought of taking those guards away from Pennsylvania. Over those train tracks. I mean, I crossed that picking my kids up and it's. It's insane and I couldn't imagine if those guards were not there. To make sure that those kids are safe, because many a times I've seen cars still flying through and that guard is trying to keep them at bay to let those kids cross. So, um, you know, there's just a lot, you know, it's a lot to consider and um. You know, all the way around. The other thing too. Um, just real quickly to wrap up is, you know, just like even when people, as we come to propose ideas and so forth. You know, thinking about the time, the money and so forth and thinking through as part of. The priorities of what the school district is focused on, like. Does everything that comes forward have to go through? You know, review, because again, it's time and money. You know, I think maybe there's a opportunity for maybe process enhancement to think through like, okay, we will take it. Because you don't want to ignore it because we're all taxpayers and we all want the best for for the kids, for the school and so forth, but. Does every last proposal need to be accounted for? And and to go through an extensive review that's taking attention away from other important matters. So maybe that's, you know, something to consider, you know, because we are in this very tight budget. Um, environment and there's so many things that are unforeseen and now we're, you know, we're up against, you know, uh. Um tariffs and and you know what that impact's gonna bring upon every one of us in um. You know, so, you know. Uh that's all that process my mind too. It's at the end of the day is the kids are first, the safety and of course the budget to be. Because we can't keep raising taxes, you know, and um and just being smart, you know, towards how we approach things. Um, you know, and how do we, you know, tighten things up and better the process for enhancement, so thank you.
Thank you. The other one, any other citizens?
Alright, signed in. Um Adesha Metzger, seven four four sixth street. Um, I I guess mine was more of a question and statement. In the budget, there was a mention of security and it's kind of hard to see the numbers from back here, but it looked like. Like two hundred thousand dollars for security that we aren't spending right now. And on the paper, you said that the security guard is mandatory unless we decide to waive it. Right? And then earlier we talked about the tariffs, the possible recession. And then we also talked about this crossing guard. And crossing guards are one of the most dangerous local government jobs out there, right? And so I'm just wondering. Are we, is the plan to bring in two hundred thousand dollars worth of security guards to all schools? And then to remove crossing guards from. And and Allegheny? Okay, I just wanted some clarification on that. And I was curious, like, why was that number for security guards so high? Thank you.
The school resource officer, a man, a new Pennsylvania mandate that all the districts, just just for point of clarity. That have to, we have to have security in districts, um. Whether it's one person or two people, depending on your buildings. So we're uh we're earmarking two, one for elementary buildings, one for high school, just two individuals. Nothing to do with the crossing guards. That was more of a, if we change the time schedule, then that could have an effect on the schedule for them. Um, but the, I mean, you can speak more to it, Sheila, but that was the earmarked amount towards those people.
Earmarked amount um is a quote for two officers. And um part of the cost was was a reimbursement for the vehicle to get back and forth between the buildings. Because we don't have, um, we have one truck that that moves food around the district. And picks up items at Lowe's when we order them, so um we don't have a security vehicle. That would be, you know, another fifty or sixty thousand dollars. So um instead of that, they they charge a monthly rate. So that's the reason why and any any company would would charge that stuff.
And we were able to waive the security guard requirement this year, but we're not moving forward. So we have.
Mandate basically from the state to say you have to have security guards at your school, but we're not giving you dollars for it. You need to figure out how to pay for it essentially, which.
Uh that's one of the grants that I'm hoping the state comes through with.
Yeah, because I, there've been so many unfunded mandates in my career. By the state and the federal government. That um I'm I'm only hoping that they come out with another school safety and security grant that we can apply and and be awarded. Currently, there's a, there's a grant that we get annually that's only about thirty five thousand dollars. We did apply for a competitive grant this past year that would have been about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, but we were not aware. So there are grants out there. We will apply for them, um hoping to offset. Some of the expense, but but the state's really good at unfunded mandates.
Thank you.
Moving to discussion or review for potential motions for approval uh for next voting meeting, starting with business and finance. Miss Luber, once again. We have Forbes Road, Korean Technology Center. Ovis General Entrepreneur and Administrative Budgets, that's our, that's Forbes budget, split amongst all the schools. We also have a capital expense for stair tread removal and replacement proposals for junior senior high school. Nine hundred dollars, that's to replace all the stair treads, those two new filters.
Do it's a crazy expense.
It's expensive because you have. You have to remove the entire rubber, the entire rubber. No, it's like a a rubber covering and you gotta pull all the rubber off, you gotta apply new stair treads. And that's a safety, we have to, we have to, we have to do that for safety or not. If you ignore it.
That's the contract pricing and that's um. The the lowest of the three quotes, the highest one was about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, so. Not to, not to say we gotta do, but it's.
Just how much it costs. Any questions there? Okay, let's move into agreements, contracts and resolutions. There's a number of items for your review for next week. First, we have a settlement agreement for your consideration. Our annual contract with Precision HR Services, that's for the twenty five twenty six school year. We have a contracted services agreement with the family services for extended school year service. As well as a student enrollment to the end of this current year. In addition, we have our annual policy maintenance agreement this year for the upcoming year. And we also have an annual agreement with Waterfront Learning, that's for cyber school. Options for our elementary students. This is for any remote learning options for elementary in case we need them. We have not utilized them since. COVID, that's correct, right, Dr. Z? But we always have to have the agreement as a backup. Next, we have our annual services agreement between the AIU. Between us and the AIU for the coming year, including a specific pricing guide for special education services. This agreement does not require school districts to purchase any of the AIU services. Just delineates the services and the cost. Ultimately, however, the AIU does provide a host of services at a cost that other outside organizations cannot. They're a good partner for us. We have our annual agreement with our school doctor for your consideration. And as Miss Luber has discussed with you, we are in one year extension of allocate transit. To Miss Luber negotiated at this year's current rates, which they weren't very happy about, were they? We have, but they agree, we have E S Y agreements for five of our Watson students to attend the extended school year program this summer. And last but not least, for your consideration, next week, we have an agreement with Goodwill. For one of our students to attend their summer early adult skills independence program this summer. Any questions, discussion points, et cetera, for the items listed?
Transportation contract, how many years was that? So the 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 current contract that we're piggybacking on was signed in two thousand and eighteen. It expired at the end of last year. We extended it for one year in the current year and this will be the second extension.
Transportation will go on. So expected, we're gonna probably get away with it for one more year. The costs will go up, so I just want everyone to be ready and aware for that. Okay, any other questions there? Okay, we have board governance, um we, this. Just one item here for your consideration, this is a recommended retirement of policy two fifty five. The PSD recommends that boards retire this policy to minimize any potential for conflicting language, given the updating the new law. If the board agrees, they can retire policy two fifty five at our next meeting. And they strongly recommend that policy language related to homeless students and students in foster care. Be kept together due to the overlap in requirements under school code thirteen thirty one point one. With other state and federal requirements for homeless foster care and other students needing the definition of education and stability. The foster care language is sufficient, this, uh the foster care language is sufficiently encapsulated in policy two fifty one. Which is our students experiencing homelessness, foster care and other educational instability policy. Any questions regarding this recommendation? Don't have a question, um but I do have a motion to retire policy two five five at this time. We do that next week or can we do that right now? We can do it, can we do it now? It's on the agenda, just retire. Well, this meeting is advertised. We add that now to the end and by, it's just. Be now, it would just be, now's great. You just wanna make sure that uh. We know who the first and the second were, yeah. You only keep the minutes, please. Sorry, well, we have them, you know, we have them recorded on the slide, so. So do we just move into a, let's make a motion a second?
Uh separate from the regular study session, it should be.
You want to do it at the end?
I think it'd probably be cleaner.
Okay, let's do it at the end of him, with lotion.
But what's the reason for doing this, like, out of voting, like?
We can do it now or. We're supposed to pull it as soon as possible. Because the language in it is not correct and not applicable anymore.
So we could just do that one individually?
Okay, so we'll. If reported, they can retire. A motion, we'll second, we'll do it. Okay, that's cool. Good, perfect, that's even better. Any other questions there? No, it's a great idea. Um, okay, personnel, let's move into personnel. We have a number of items here. We have an REA supplemental. Positions slated for the twenty five twenty six school year. We have an unpaid day request for your consideration, as well as a non-contracted supplemental. Positions for event workers and musical positions for the upcoming year. Um, we have a teacher retirement resignation and resignations from our current girls basketball coach, as well as one of our current professionals. For one of our retired teachers, as well as a change status from five point five era to a three point zero era. Finally, we have three high school students interested in summer custodial employment for your consideration next week. Well, and he's done a good job of sort of front loading these, trying to get these done in May. Which I think is better for everybody to have all the positions ready for the next year. Big questions here?
A couple of questions. So the teacher retirements, that so those can get posted. You're saying like before the end of the school year, like to be able to start getting up.
They're already posted.
They're already posted, okay. Is the coach resignation also posted?
Yes, I believe it's posted, yes.
So what's the timing of getting that filled as well, Friday the summer?
Friday the summer, so we could do summer camp and summer workouts and stuff, so. Want to, we'll go for it?
Me? No. I just have a.
Few AAU connections you could send out.
I'm not going there.
Any other questions there? Questions? Okay, education, um no student, no items in student life. We have um a few education items here. There are the first are the potential graduation candidates pending the approval of our high school principal. For this year's graduation. The veteran will make it across finish line. We also have a request for Mr. Cubistec to attend the History Day State Finals competition. That was in early June and we had the Riverview Junior Senior High School Handbook and approved edits that Dr. Turf. Um previously. Updated you on. We're going to push the athletic handbook edits to next week. Or possibly the June meeting. Any questions regarding items in education? Questions here? Can't wait for graduation.
So what's our total number?
Can't wait. Pray for good weather, although last week was fun. It really was fun in the rain. I thought it was fun. And the kids loved it. Was it pray for good weather, but it was, it was fun last year.
This is a big loss. Next year, then it goes down again.
Okay, any questions there? Finally, last but not least, we have our study session and voting session minutes from April. Any edits, submissions, issues with the April seventh or April fourteenth minutes? Hey, let's move into second hearing of citizens. This is designated for all school related topics. If you'd like to speak, sign in, come up, state your name and address and try to keep your comments to three minutes or less. Please keep in mind that the board does not typically respond to public comment, or rather takes the hearing into consideration for all future governance. Also realize that all comments and meetings are recorded. Would anyone like to speak in our second hearing of citizens? One is enough, okay?
Dude, there was something else. Cynthia Gajetta, five ten eight street. The one thing I wanted to ask was, I mean, was there ever a consideration for grant writer? To have a grant writer? You know, because to point, you know, as much as you can get a grant. So we're not trying to find funds to partly pay for a project, but was, you know, has there ever been a consideration?
No, I mean, most of the grants that we apply for um are through the state. And I I mean, we're all, I think most of the principals, especially Dr. Z, were pretty versed in in. And I, I mean, I mean, we're all, I think most of the principals, especially Dr. Z, were pretty versed in, in, in the. In the software that they utilize. It's not, I, I spend the narratives off to the educators and I fill in the dollar amounts based on what we need. And it's a, it's a team effort, really.
Also, we also have a, there is a, uh. There's an excerpt in the teacher contract that if the teacher applied for.
Right.
There's a, there's a return, there's like sort of a percentage return rate.
Okay.
In there, if they apply. Of course, those applications have to go through.
Right.
Administration to make sure they align with the teaching plan and they don't have added backend costs that sometimes.
Okay.
People don't think about or match costs or things like that.
Some of the larger grants are, are like the one that I stated, um, we would love to put some more solar on, on a few of the buildings. But the large facility grants that we're able to apply for require us to put a portion of the, to. Pay for a portion of the costs regarding.
But is there like other agencies that you could potentially?
Well, the, the D C E D, I mean, there's several state agencies that, that offer grants, but, um. Only really the state gives grants, you know, without having to, to match funds.
Although we did recently apply for an iconic grant that one of our parents.
Yeah, we do have a grant outstanding right now for, uh, for STEM.
Yeah, sometimes there are other grants as well.
Thank you.
Do you really think people can also apply for them on schools to have?
Or recommend us a funding or something?
Especially if they're. That, I mean, definitely.
You'd hear about something.
Taking donations every day.
Anybody giving out money.
But they still met scarce, seven four four six street, so I'm gonna piggyback off her statement about the importance of maybe considering. On grant writing, so I've worked for a number of organizations, large and small, and so. For example, Pittsburgh Parks, their grant writing department is larger than their accounting department. Um, and the smaller organizations I work for assemble, um, as soon as they brought in a grant writer. They quadrupled their budget, right? And so it's because the grant writer can devote more time into pulling in additional resources. And finding people to provide the matching money. So you can have four or five different people, like grant organizations to match, you don't have to match it yourself. You can get smaller grants to provide those matching funds. And it could be something that could be of quite a benefit to our school district. So I was just saying, maybe look into that a little bit and don't necessarily, um, discount it, cause it could be a big benefit to us. Especially if we're coming into a time of uncertainty. Thanks.
Anyone else? Wanna thank everyone who was sending this week, oh wait, no, no, yeah, we gotta do the thing, that's the thing.
And now make my motion to root, um, tire policy, um, two five five.
I second that motion.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions?
I abstain, I haven't read it, so.
I don't wanna. We should pass this. Um, I also want for the record to mention that there was an executive session, six thirty P M, we met before the meeting. To discuss the first book contract. Okay, um, and me, can I have a motion to adjourn, stuff is on it here, I'm not doing adjourned, okay?
I second.